Everyone with cell phones, pagers. That would be great. We're meeting here tonight for the, uh... Plenary Budget for Town Board. The motion to open up a public hearing.
No.
Sorry. Motion eighty second to open a public hearing for the twenty-four general highway sewer divided six. At, uh... Six oh two. Public hearing's live.
And.
Close the stadium. It's clear. So, the highlights of the twenty-four plenary budget are a want to raise by tax the general fund. Uh... The highway fund is five thirteen four eighty-five.
Did you guys hear? No. It's not quite over. Just because that way it's very far.
You guys want to come sit out front, sit out back, that'd be great.
Go on, Randy.
They would help us out. Hate your first time you be in this foreigner class.
I like to sit in bed so I can see who's talking. So we get in front, I can't see who's talking.
Give them the swivel seat.
I need it with my things stinging my sore neck.
Right, you can stand up if you want.
Mobile.
So the general highway funds and tax rate, uh... Three seven zero point seven four thousand, reduction of forty dollars and seventy one cents from last year. Sewer duty is zero to be raised by taxes, home unit remain at one fifteen and quarter per unit, uh... Four sixteen a year, and debt service will be zero. There are three hundred sixteen units, water district one, um... Zero zero to be raised by taxes, debt service is complete. Water two, sixty thousand seven hundred forty-three thousand to be raised by taxes. Town Board having a hundred and sixty-five units, and the town staff having twenty-eight. Water three is four thousand six hundred forty to be raised by taxes, ten units. Water four is five thousand ninety-three dollars to be raised by taxes, twelve units. Water district five, sixteen thousand seven hundred to be raised by taxes, fifty-six units. Water district six, nine thousand sixty-nine dollars to be raised by taxes, thirty-two units. Water seven is forty-two thousand two hundred fifty to be raised by taxes, and that's sixty-six units. Uh... Water district eight is ninety thousand four hundred sixty-one to be raised by taxes at a hundred and thirteen units. Water improvement by federal area number one, two hundred fifteen thousand five hundred seventy-seven thousand to be raised by taxes, two hundred forty-seven units. Fire taxes in districts are at two hundred thirty-one thousand, water rescue pod is at thirty thousand. Um... Justin, can you help us out this time?
Um... With the water area benefit code, so the way the tax cap is calculated, they take the amount of taxes you've collected in all your different districts throughout prior year, and they have a calculation that allows you to go up two percent plus a growth factor plus a couple other factors that the state has on their system, and that's how taxes you can go up in all. It's not limited by funds. So your funds from what you collected last year to this year was not going to go over the tax cap, but by the completion of, or the... They're far off along with the completion of the water area benefit, water or whatever it's called, that they now have to tax that district to cover the interest and the debt service on it. By adding that two hundred and fifteen thousand for that district, it then puts the whole town over the tax cap. So they will have to override the tax cap to meet the state's obligation of the tax cap.
Thank you. Public accounts.
So what's it take to override the tax cap?
It's just a law. They just have to put a law on the books that says we'll override the tax cap.
Just a formality?
Just a formality. It doesn't change anything, and back when the state originally introduced the tax cap, they, for one year, they gave everybody a little check, that if your town stayed under the cap, you got a part of this money. The school districts, they did it for a few years, if your school district stayed under, you got a check, but for towns, it was only one year that you actually got a check. So now it's just a formality to stay under the cap or not under the cap. It's just what you put down in your records, did you stay under the cap or not. And the state this year projected, I believe it's seven percent increase in expenses, but they still set the cap at two percent.
You understand?
Yep. Okay. Do you ask me for questions about the budget?
Sure.
Okay. Can you please, um... Tell me what unexpended balance is, because I never remember correctly, and I didn't look it up. What does that mean?
It's the use of the savings account to balance the budget. So proper taxes and other revenues cover a portion of it, and they have to keep it balanced with what's in expenses, so that the rest of it comes from the savings, which is unexpended balance. So it's balance that you didn't spend in prior years, so it went to fund balance. That's why this state calls it unexpended balance.
Okay. So in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, it was budgeted for a hundred and sixty-seven, et cetera, thousand dollars, and it's estimated that you've used none of that this year?
Well, the estimate falls down, um... We don't put a number in there because it fluctuates any time an estimate changes. So if you go down on page five of that report, at the bottom it says twenty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-five.
Where am I looking? Oh, at the minus.
Yeah, to the negative twenty-four one thirty-five. That's the projected at the end of twenty-three where it's gonna be, you know, it could change, you know, depending on what they spent.
That you'll use, that the town will have used twenty-four thousand dollars...
Of their fund balance.
Other funds other than those taxed, et cetera, last year?
Correct.
Okay.
So they budgeted to use a hundred and sixty-seven, but the whole didn't really use that much. I believe there was a big project they had budgeted, and then they're naming it after that.
Okay. So...
Actually, it was in the...
So to create this budget this year, the tentative, or excuse me, the preliminary was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars...
Yep.
Of the unexpended balance that's gonna be used in lieu of raising taxes more?
Correct.
Okay.
And typically, your expenses you don't normally break maxed out, so hopefully you don't use the whole hundred and twenty-five, you use it on the...
The cushion.
Well, it's not, yes, it could, but it's just, you, I mean, they would spend every minute doing budget modifications, and we try to guess exactly where it is, because couple would, you know, everyone would go over or under.
Right. Okay. I'm just going through my red marks on my paper. Um... And the controller controlled expenditures, I think it is, is the thirteen-six, is that the bookkeeper?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason for, um... Deputy Town Clerk going from a budget estimated from nine thousand to six thousand dollars this year, what was the reason for that in the budget? Just because that won't be used in all of it.
I think it's more of a historic, if you look last year, they only spent five thousand nine hundred fifty-five, the year before that was thirty-four hundred, so they just, instead of budgeting nine, they pulled it back to more like a three.
I thought it said six, and they used six. No, sorry, nine-nine.
Yeah, but they put it at nine, the estimate is put it at nine.
But that's not a true figure?
Well, we did it, well, we took the estimates in in July, we prepared at the end of March. We're at six thousand one thirty-five right now.
Okay, so the estimated of the use is throwing it off?
Yeah.
Okay. Um...
Wages are subject to estimate.
Correct. Um... On the next page, um... Public Works Administration was never used before, is that in line for the budget for some reason? And what is it? Thirty-five hundred dollars?
I believe that was correct.
What was the question? I didn't hear.
Oh, Public Works Administration, I think it is, Personal Services, I'm guessing what these mean. Um... There is no line item, I don't figure for any other year, it's a new, it's a new line. And it's posted with thirty-five hundred dollars to it, I just don't know what it cries.
I don't, I can't, I'm trying to remember exactly what specifically they're gonna use it for in this town, but typically what that is, is they pay you like a highway super or somebody who's helping coordinate between the different public works, like the recycle centers and different things. I think that's what that is, but I don't remember it at the budget.
What number is it? Hang on a second, it's A one four nine zero dash one.
Page three.
Oh, sorry, yes, page three. It just hasn't been listed before.
Yeah. I don't remember. Was that it? If you were trying to get to somebody else to read the legging zone for the package? Trying to remember, because it was bad, what, obviously, we meant to put that in.
Yeah, I, I, I remember talking about, but I remember it almost.
Gotcha.
But it's a bubble word, it's, it's gonna be in coordination with something, water, sewer, or, um...
No, further on, further on, there's not a line item somewhere else that I saw that was before, so that's just moving something under a different category for a category?
What was it?
I think it was trash, or sewer, or...
That's exactly.
Or something, so I just got a general...
Transfer station, park, and what else do you have updated?
Sewer.
No, sewer.
Were you gonna have one here? I want to work with you some of that, and then we're gonna be doing that for everyone to try and...
But that, but that is...
Okay, and my thing's moving there, the transfer.
So it's not coming out of those, it's not coming out of those areas anymore, it's coming out of the general?
No, no, it's still general, it was a general line item.
It was, okay.
It's just under Public Works instead of...
Refuse, or...
No, no.
I'm not, I'm...
If I, I can tell you afterwards, if I go get my last year's budget and...
Yeah, I just got this this morning, so I'm just line for line trying to...
I'll look while you guys...
It's okay, no, thank you. Um... Control of animals dropped fifteen hundred dollars?
That was for the dog census?
Oh, so that, okay. Um... On last year's budget, workers' compensation was really, really high, and why was it so high in last year's budget, and why is it so low this year, and what was the reason for it?
That's what the number the county gives us.
So it's just a plug-in number?
Excuse me?
It's just a plug-in number that you get?
Yes.
So the eight thousand comes from the county, then?
Comes from the county.
Okay, based on whatever their...
Yeah, their calculation.
I know Jesse County went through a thing, either county, about, they were trying to use a blended rate for all positions within the town.
I remember you talking about something.
And then they realized that towns were starting to pull out of the conglomerate within the county, and it was because they were getting better rates elsewhere, and what it was is the paid firemen and the paid police were, are very high worker property, and they were making it pay a clerical in the town.
Right, okay.
So they let through and we did it, so towns and the county are paying a lot less.
Then, in the appropriations for the fire district, you just combined, um... The fire protection, I'm assuming after the last, under one for budgeting purposes?
Yeah.
There was a question. The mowing, okay, so here it was, the sewer administration, it's five hundred and twenty dollars now instead of forty-eight fifty-six, that's, that's the thirty-five hundred dollars maybe for... It's been four thousand something right along, and now it's five hundred and twenty dollars.
What page is that?
Um, is page seventeen under appropriations for the sewer.
That should be, that should be the forty-eight fifty-six. Oh, no, that's point one, that's point one. No, that should be, that should be forty-eight fifty-six, I don't know why it says that.
I think she might be right, it might be where we move that thirty-five hundred up to the public works down there.
I don't think so, because that was the fireman and fire gave it pay, so you couldn't do it up in public works.
At the original meeting, we moved it down to five hundred and twenty-one.
In the water districts, I just glanced at them, but I was wondering why the change in rates for a couple of them may increase, shouldn't they with more amortization, excuse me, shouldn't they stay the same? Um... It was district, um, excuse me, five and seven, um, the rates went, if I'm reading this correctly, that may not be, two eighty-six to two ninety-eight, and then six thirty-one to six forty-five per unit?
So on those, the principal goes up. So they have, where the, the principal for the bond, was it twenty dollars for so many years, then the bond goes to twenty-one for so many years, and then it went to twenty-two. As the interest is coming down, so everyone's on the lateral step for you, so you see to, like, there'd be twenty thousand in principal and twenty thousand three forty in interest, and now it's twenty-one thousand in nineteen nine thirty for interest. So it's gonna go up just a little bit because of the step in the bond schedule.
Okay, so that will happen in all the districts at some point-ish?
Depending on how the district was formulated. If, if they just have, we're gonna pay twenty thousand for the next thirty years on principal, then it won't have that.
So that was all based on how the contract for the funding was...
Correct.
At the time, okay.
We don't have the bond schedule, so this is seven here, um... As you can see, in, it's twenty-one thousand starting in twenty-four, and then it'll jump to twenty-two and twenty-twenty-six.
Oh, okay, so that's not in any of this that we have, correct?
No, this is, this is just amortization schedule.
Okay, that's what you go by for when you count these numbers?
Yep, yep.
Can we go back to that Public Works one?
And then number five is the same.
It was A fifty-ten point one C street administration, trash, park, water, so that was then changed to Public Works, that's all.
So that, okay, I'm sorry, you were talking to me not saying, sorry.
Yep.
Oh, I see.
The Public Works one, that you were talking, I think it's your first second question.
Okay.
That's just been changed to, I just told you, street administration, personal services, trash, park, and water, it's just been renamed to...
It's just been reallocated to a different line in the budget, okay.
Nope.
Um... I don't know if anybody else has any questions over here. So this is the line that she's saying come out for three thousand and moved up, because right now it was a sub-line of the highway super's pay, and now they're gonna move it up to its own dedicated line for Public Works. So it's not a sub-line of the highway super does pay. No more transparent.
Last year, no, not quite yet, last year, um, at budget time, they, you had budgeted in for the E code.
Yep.
Um, where, I don't recollect where that was put in here, and where does it stand, and is it...
I think it came out of contingency, we're almost done, I think middle of January we have to have it done, there's certain parts, we've done our portion, and Paul Boylan, Louise, the assessor, and Melissa, the code enforcement officer, all have portions to do, so they have to get on and do their portions, and then...
So the payment comes, I mean, where is it in here where it was in the budget?
It was, I think we did it last year, we did the budget, so it was coming out of contingency.
Which, where is contingency on here? I don't do budgets well, so I should've gotten this last week, so I apologize.
Nineteen twenty point four, is that what?
Nineteen ninety point four.
Which is pretty drawn.
Uh... Three. But the money gets transferred to a public body occasion, you don't actually charge it to that line.
I got a quick question. On page four, underneath the museum, um... Budgeted for twenty twenty-three was twenty-five hundred, and then you have sixty-six hundred for twenty twenty-four. Um... The money that the solar gave for the museum, is that allocated anywhere on here?
They didn't give us any money yet. We have received any of the money for the museum.
They didn't, two years ago?
No.
Not yet.
Okay.
So along with that, the sixty-six hundred dollars, I know that they were asking about their budget.
Yep.
Is that for the insulation that they were asking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Where is councilman wages on here, or salaries?
Here is A ten ten point one, top of appropriations. Yep.
So the thirteen five thirty is for the four town board members?
Yeah.
There was no wage increase this year?
Yeah.
So, I hate to ask this, but, um... Councilman making a portion of whatever they are to serve, um... Of that amount with no increase, and then almost twenty percent increase for the highway superintendent, is there a reason that was increased so much in one fell swoop?
Yeah. Well, we went through and, uh... Went through the rest of the towns, um... Our highest highway superintendent was Ray Boehr, that's right. I guess who also give on merit, does an excellent job, works very long with the men, is to tell the men what to do when going home.
I think that's really high for one fell...
What's that?
I think that's really high for one fell swoop.
Well...
Can I make a comment? Do you want to contribute? If you have some personal experience with highway superintendents, it's probably the worst job in the world.
I'm sure, I just, that just...
County's been it after ten years, I'm called twenty-four seven, and oftentimes, the people you are supervising make more money than you do because they get overtime and you don't.
That was part of the cases, Bob.
I, I have family that was a highway superintendent, I don't know why anybody would want the job, just, you know...
No, I, I understand, it, it just, with looking at different things on this, it stood out boldly in looking at it for, for different things. I was using a calculator.
It's almost like, um... The highway workers, you guys are hard to find, you got a three hundred thousand dollar truck, you sure don't wanna put some Joe Monkey in there and roll over, okay? So what you got, you take care of, and that goes along with the highway superintendent as well. As I said before, this one doesn't, uh... Mark a bunch of orders and run off to a coffee shop, or home, or wherever you go, um... He works right next to him, that means a lot, and it means a lot to the men, and it means a lot to me and this town. And he's easy to work with.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I've got in quick breath. Thank you.
I think going back to Hannah's question on the sewer, I think that does need to be changed, I don't know why it threw that five hundred from three from, but I think it needs to be changed back.
Were you gonna take the one position not out of there, or other?
No. No, if sewer, it asks you, they have to come out of sewer, if there's sewer, they have to come out of sewer.
Was the building gonna be handled somewhere else?
No.
Yeah, you guys can, yeah, I think you're done with the public hearing, we can do one application now.
Any good? Last chance.
What do you want? You wanna close the meeting? I have, I have to, unfortunately, and I know you're gonna get to it.
That's fine.
So on the appropriations for the fire protection, it says all two thirty-one thousands going by, and, and zero South by, am I misreading that?
I don't know.
It's, uh, eighteen of nineteen.
Maybe?
No, the way that is, that'll be in the contract, but the, it's just, what's in that appropriation, it's just for the fire, for by, how it's divided up would be in the contract. This is not the contract for the fire department.
Okay, so this is the appropriation for the whole spend?
For the town's spend on fire.
Okay, I understand.
Wait, originally, if you look at the budget here, it says SF one, SF two, that typically means there's two fire districts, which means on the tax bills, there's completely two separate, but you guys are one fire district as far as taxing entities, but then they just subcontract with the two different companies?
No, no, no.
No?
You have your fire protection district, yeah, different than a fire district.
We just did it because we had it on the contract, yeah.
But they are one, for, for property tax purposes, they're one district. When we get the assessors printout, it comes, you know, the assess value on the fire district is a hundred and forty-one million dollars, which is one, whereas in some towns we work, where they have two separate fire, so like, one check's gotta go here, but they have an own, and the way, way it's mapped out, it's one district.
That total is for both.
Okay.
All it is is a month.
How it's divided up will be in the contract, that's all.
So how's that contract gonna be negotiated? I mean, you made a suggestion at the last meeting.
Correct.
Is that carved in stone, or is it gonna be up to the, the two of us to negotiate?
I believe that another meeting will have to be had between, um... Eric Martin, South Byron and Byron.
Okay.
And probably, uh...
Don't time this up.
It would probably be a good thing if John here from Byron, whoever's in the top Byron, these two get together tonight to figure out a date for your meeting.
Yeah.
In my opinion, I'm the kind of guy who likes to get it done and get it up behind you, so, uh... You guys can get together tonight after the meeting and figure out what day you're available to haul you up, that'll be good. Um... We're, we're, we got time, I don't wanna wait till one o'clock hour to figure out we got a little contract, let's get it done and put it behind us.
When do we normally sign a contract? Is it in December?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I have you.
Good? There's no other questions, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made, second to close the public hearing at, let's say about 6:30. I'm fair to say aye?
I agree.
I oppose the same, it's clear.
Now, the resolution to approve this, I assume we got to keep Water District 1 out of that?
No. Just like it is.
Even though we got to have a public hearing on it?
Yep.
Include it in?
Yeah.
You can include it in?
Yep.
I offer the following resolution to move for its adoption, the Town Board here, hereby adopt the 2024 Town of Byron Highway General, Highway, Sewer, and Water District preliminary budget as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
Resolution made in second to adopt the 2024 Town Budget. Hold order here.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
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 Who wants to take care of the tax cap over? Resolution to introduce proposal law number two of 2023 and to schedule a public hearing. I offer the following resolution move for its adoption, whereas the Town Board of the Town of Byron, New York, desires to consider adopting legislation to override the limit on the amount of real property taxes that may be levied by the Town of Byron pursuant to general municipal law section 3-C, and to allow the Town of Byron to adopt a town budget for fiscal year 2023...
2024.
24. You got one. That requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit, also known as Town of Byron Local Law Number Two of 2023. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Byron, New York, that proposed local law number two of 2023 entitled "A Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit Established in General Municipal Law Section 3-C", which proposed the local law is now in its final form and appears by a copy thereof here to attached. The, and the same hereby is introduced for adoption. And be it further resolved that said proposed local law be laid upon the desk of the members of this Town Board on this date and remain there, and a copy thereof to be kept on file in the office of the Town Clerk until December 13, 2023. And that a public hearing be held before this Town Board on the 13th of December, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. at the Byron Town Hall, 7028 Route 237, Byron, New York, on the advisability of enacting said proposed local law. And be it further resolved that a copy of said proposed local law be mailed to each member of the Town Board, not in attendance, in a postpaid, properly addressed, and securely closed envelope in a postbox within the Town of Byron, New York, not less than 10 days, calendar days, excluding Sunday, prior to the date of said public hearing. And be it further resolved that the Town Clerk shall cause notice of said public hearing to be published once in the daily, the Tanya Daily News, at least five days prior to the date of said public hearing, which notice shall contain the time and place of said hearing. The title and purpose thereof, as well as a statement that copy of said proposed local law is on file in the Town Clerk's office.
Thank you, Jeff.
You?
You have a second?
Second.
Resolution made in second to your public hearing to override the tax cap for 2023. Hold order.
Aye.
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 Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Oh.
Motion made in second to adjourn tonight's meeting. I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same, it's clear. Thank you.